Good evening. We'd like to welcome you all to council chambers today. Who's first time to council chambers? Raise your hand. This is your town hall. Welcome. We're so glad that you guys are here. You know where we are now, and that's always a good thing. I'm Jen Daniels. I'm the mayor of the town of Gilbert, and I have the best council team, so I'm excited to introduce them to you. We have Vice Mayor Bridget Peterson, Councilmember Eddie Cook, he's got the hat on, Councilmember Victor Peterson, Councilmember Jared Taylor, Councilmember Scott Anderson, and last but not least, Councilmember Jordan Ray. So, we don't do this during the summer. You guys are our first group of student citizens for the school year, and we're really excited. It's our favorite. It's absolutely our favorite. We love honoring our students. I am so impressed with the youth of Gilbert. Every time I get to speak with them, work with them, I'm just so proud that we have the caliber of kids in this community. So, I'm talking about you guys down here. I see you sitting here, and we're really grateful that you're here. Thanks for letting us honor you. I think we have a couple things we just want to mention. We, like a lot of you, follow character counts, so this council follows those as well. And this month's highlighted pillar is responsibility. You can see all of those pillars of character on the wall. Is there another? Thank you. And we have awesome sponsors. Have you guys ever been to Sal's Gilbert Pizza? It's like a local legend, right? Just across the street, there's a coupon in your bag today that you'll get for Sal's, and also Nitro Live, where they mix science and ice cream. And nothing can go wrong when you mix science and ice cream. So, you might want to go see Nitro Live. There's some coupons from both of those great Gilbert companies in your bag. All right, I think this is it with the teachers. Now, teachers are probably the hardest working people in the town of Gilbert, and I know because they have to take care of four Daniels kids every single day. And so, if you are a teacher or an administrator, or I even see one of our ASU East President Dwayne Rowne here, if you work with our schools in any capacity, staff, teachers, and administrators, will you please stand so we can recognize you? And they could be home and in their pajamas, but they're here, supporting our students, which is so typical of the caliber of teachers that we have in Gilbert as well. So, thank you to each of you for being here. We have one fun little thing. So, all the teachers that submitted a name for Student Citizen of the Month, their names, the teachers' names are in this bucket. And I need some help. Will you come help me? Okay, come on up. All right, tell us your name.
Sophie.
Sophie, what grade are you in?
First.
First grade? Awesome. Okay, Sophie, will you be the one that pulls a teacher's name out? And if you don't, get your own teacher's name. It's okay. She'll still like you. Okay. Good job. Thank you. All right, let's see who you got. Mrs. Emmett from Pioneer Elementary. Is Mrs. Emmett here? Mrs. Emmett's here! Congratulations, Mrs. Emmett. There's a gift card for Nitro Live in that, and so, we want to make sure you have that. Thank you for taking time to submit a student. All right, we do this in three groups and really efficiently, and the entire town council helps to make this happen. So, if you go to an elementary school, from Ashland Ranch Elementary to Islands Elementary, if your school is A to J and you're in elementary school, will you please come forward and go stand with Councilmember Ray? This is Group One. Vice Mayor Peterson will assist us with the names tonight. A couple things for parents and teachers that are here. Lauren Oxford is here. I almost called you Lauren Conrad. She was famous, and you're almost famous. But Lauren Oxford, from our town team, is here to take photos. So, she'll have professional photos available for you this evening on Flickr, and I think on Facebook as well. Awesome. And so, you're welcome. Also, when your child comes down, we'll take a picture right here. You'll see it runs pretty seamlessly. And if you wanted to take a photo, this is the best spot. All right? Terrific. Then we won't have a bag for him if he's not on here. She said his name's not on here from Coronado, but he told them to come. The school told them to come. No. What's his name?
Desmond.
Desmond. Last name? Okay, and he's from Coronado? Elementary, right? Let's see, Coronado comes in here. You all set?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. The first student is Finn Garland from Bridges Elementary. Next, we have Angelina Cueros from Burke Elementary. Angelina, did I get your name right? Kidos. Kidos. Next is Sophia Bunnell from Carroll Ray Ranch Elementary. Ila Lacy from Centennial Elementary.
When are you planning on doing his?
He'll be like three more.
Isaac Sturgeon from Chaparral Elementary. I know, look at it. Colton Lauer from Charlotte Patterson Elementary. You can come up. You can come up. Desmond Aldaretti from Coronado Elementary. Olivia Tybo from EduPrize School. Right in front. Carissa Strange from Gateway Point Elementary. My future is bright. Jonna Smith from Gilbert Elementary. Nixon Colburn from Highland Park Elementary. No Nixon. Molly Bobbala from Higley Traditional Academy. Gus Bowles from Houston Elementary. Did you give him the empty pack? Good. Kayden Seville from Islands Elementary. All right, Group Two is the rest of our elementary school students that are here. So, if you are in any of the other elementary schools, come on down. And Group One, we know it's also a school night, and if your kids are anything like mine, they have a test tomorrow. So, if you need to leave after your child receives their award, please feel free to do so. We totally understand. Oh, look at the hair. Desmond. I don't know. They might be, they probably went out to the lobby. Group Two. I apologize if I get your name wrong. Queesi Guyen from Leading Edge Academy. Is it Queesi? Quesi. 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 Michaela Benevente Cruz from Mesquite Elementary. Arien Batia from Neely Traditional Academy. I'm sorry if I got that. Arien. Michelle Lee from Oak Tree Elementary. Preston Richards from Patterson Elementary. Sunny Farr from Pioneer Elementary. Joshua Sanchez from Playa del Rey Elementary. He's as tall as you. Aiden Nickerson from Power Ranch Elementary. Ava Pierce from Quartz Hill Elementary. John Ty Smirros from Riggs Elementary. Catherine Simpson from Santana Elementary. We know Kate's mom. Kara Waskowicz from Santana Elementary. Did I totally kill that?
Yeah.
Was it good? It was a miracle. Miracles do happen. Robert Main from Spectrum Elementary. Oh, my favorite color. I love it. And yes, Councilmember Cook, too. Amy Tay. Ami Tay from Town Meadows Elementary. How do you say that? Ami? Ami Tay from Town Meadows Elementary. And Paisley Mahaffey from Valvista Lakes Elementary. And Paisley, turn her plaque around, Mayor. Paisley's teacher is Mrs. Lunt. Yeah. That's it, Mayor, for that group. Thank you, Group Two. That was a great group. There were some fan clubs in the house. That was awesome. The third group is all of our junior high and high school students, so come on down. And parents and teachers, please feel free to fill in, and we'll just wait a couple minutes till everyone clears out. Everybody make the transition. Oh, you give her a hug. She's having pictures taken. I think we're ready. First one is Bryce Grimes from Campo Verde High School. Back, back, back there. There we go. Cassidy Blodgett Eskridge from Canyon Valley High School. Haley Lammerow from Christ Greenfield Lutheran. Charlise Burns from Cooley Middle School. Nicolette Bollier from Gilbert Classical Academy. Excuse me. How did I say that, Nicolette? Was your last name? Bollier. Bollier. Megan Miller from Gilbert High School. Marcus Edwards from Higley High School. Danielle Filo from Leading Edge Early College. Hunter Wasson from Mesquite High School. Madison Rowley from Mesquite Junior High. No Madison? And Vida Lemay from Payne Junior High. Ella Smith from Perry High School. Cole Pierce from Sausman Middle School. And Yolissa Garcia from South Valley Junior High. All right, that concludes Group Three. All right, that concludes Group Three. Thank you all for being here tonight. Our regularly scheduled council meeting will begin in just a few minutes. Thank you for being patient. As we get organized up here for our September 20th, 2018 Town Council meeting, we've just completed our Student Citizen of the Month portion of our meeting. It is a blast. So thanks to all the parents, teachers, and administrators and staff who made that possible. We sure appreciate everyone's help on that. At this time, I look to Councilmember Cook to assist us with the scouts.
Well, Mayor, thank you very much. We have some wonderful scouts here that are going to help us lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance. If we can all rise here in the chambers, and we'll have Charlie lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you very much, Charlie. What we're going to do here is that we'll pass the microphone down. So if you can introduce yourselves and let us know what your rank and what troop you're from. And I have a little gift to give you.
My name is Carlos Gonzalez, and I'm the Assistant Scout Master for Troop 843. And these young men, they live in Power Ranch neighborhood.
I'm Charlie Gonzalez, and I am in, I am a first class, and I am in Troop... 843.
I am Mark Miley. I don't know what class I am, so you can laugh it up. My favorite thing to do is to play roller derby.
I'm Logan Moss. I'm a star, and I'm in Troop 843.
I'm David. I am the Signo Pacholito and a first-class rank.
My name is Brayden Hatcher. I'm a first-class scout in Troop 843.
My name is Eli Schmidt. I'm a first-class in Troop 843.
My name is JJ Van Char. I'm a first-class in Troop 843.
My name is Graham Brown, and I am a scout in Troop 125.
Graham, is your dad an expert in water? Yes, he is. Thanks for bringing the next generation here, Erica.
Well, round of applause for these scouts. And behalf of the Mayor and the Town Council, we give you these gifts, which is a Pocket Constitution, yes, Constitution. So the next time you come, you get to have a test. So you have to read this. All right, thank you again, folks. We appreciate it.
At this time, we'd like to invite Pastor Thor Stranholt from Valor Christian Center to the podium to offer our invocation this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Amen. There we go. All right, Mayor Daniels, Vice Mayor, members of the council, and to all of you, thank you for, once again, for having me here this evening. Let's pray. Lord, we take just a moment at this time to thank you for all of your blessings. We thank you that we live in a land where we can say, "One nation, under God." We thank you that we live in a town where your name is proudly acknowledged, a town known for its integrity and for its "let's get the job done" attitude. We ask your blessing upon this meeting and upon all the decisions that are made here tonight. And it's in Jesus' name I pray. Amen. And amen.
Thank you, Pastor Thor. We sure appreciate that. The clerk will conduct the roll call.
Mayor Jen Daniels.
Here.
Vice Mayor Victor Peterson.
Vice Mayor Bridget Peterson.
Bridget Peterson, I'm so sorry. I'm looking at your name. I can't read. Councilmember Eddie Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Victor Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Jared Taylor.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you, Lisa. Councilmember Jared Taylor is going to assist us with our proclamation and presentation this evening.
Mayor, thank you. It's an honor to be able to recognize Manufacturing Month. One of the favorite individuals in the Taylor family history is a fellow named Eli Whitney, who kicked off manufacturing and the Industrial Revolution. And so, love the fact that I get to recognize some of the great work. I've also worked in large manufacturing organizations. Could I invite those that are part of the Chambers Manufacturing Council and also Gilbert's Economic Development Team to come forward here and join me here at the front? You know, this is very important employment opportunities, both for Gilbert, the state of Arizona. So I would like to give the microphone here, and if you could introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about this partnership that's continuing to grow.
Thank you, Councilman Taylor. My name is Dean Shepherd. I'm with the Office of Economic Development for the town of Gilbert. Obviously, this partnership is tremendous in value, not only to bring quality jobs to the town of Gilbert, sustaining quality jobs, and evolving the town of Gilbert to diversify our business corridors and our business sector.
Hello, I'm Mike Jamison with Wisdom Natural Brands. And for us as a business located here in Gilbert, having the town, the chamber, and us, and our businesses, collectively working together means everything to a business, a small business like ourselves.
Good evening. My name is Brett Manning. I'm the Vice President of Operations for Silent Air and Chairman of the Manufacturers Council. We have a significant competitive advantage in Gilbert with the collaboration between the Chamber of Commerce, the town, all the support staff, and the manufacturers to really attract and retain world-class manufacturing. So we're very excited.
I'm Dwayne Roan from Arizona State University. This partnership tells a lot about the vital role that education plays in workforce development.
Great, and thank you, gentlemen, for being here. You should know of our commitment to continuing the partnership and supporting manufacturing. It's an important part of Gilbert, the state of Arizona. So with that, let me just read a couple selections here of this proclamation. Whereas manufacturing is growing, targeted industry for Gilbert. And whereas the Gilbert Office of Economic Development is focused on creating, retaining, and expanding manufacturing jobs that facilitate growth, enhance wealth, provide a stable tax base. Whereas manufacturing supports over 3,000 jobs in Gilbert. It's projected to increase jobs by 4% by 2028. And supporting council initiatives that promote and encourage manufacturing. Now therefore, Mayor Daniels of the town of Gilbert does hereby proclaim October 2018 as Manufacturing Month. So can we hear it for Manufacturing Month and these great gentlemen here? Hey, thanks again.
I'd like to quickly echo those sentiments of gratitude that Councilmember Taylor has expressed. We sure are appreciative of the work that you all do. We're especially grateful for the chamber who continues to convene this group, and also to our Office of Economic Development for recognizing the value in manufacturing jobs. I look at our scouts out here and some of the young people that we have, and I hope you will look very closely at some of the amazing opportunities that exist in manufacturing. There are individuals who are welders, electricians, plumbers. They do incredible things, and they make a substantial amount of money, more than you might realize. And so, great jobs in the town of Gilbert, and thank you to each of you for the value you provide. Thanks. At this time, we move to Communications from Citizens. Vice Mayor? Double-check our box in the back. I think I see Chief Solberg there. Nothing in the box? Thank you. We will move to our consent calendar. Oh, pardon me. Yes, we'll have you speak now, but if you can introduce yourself, and then after you speak, if you can fill out a card just for our public record. Terrific, no problem. Thank you for being here. There's three minutes that we'll set on the timer. Go ahead and provide that to our town attorney. We can ensure that they provide it to us. Our clerk apologizes. Thank you.
Thank you for hearing me. My name's Jamie Hamsey. I am a, I live here in Gilbert. I moved to Arizona in 2001. I played soccer my whole, I'm here to talk about the RFP at Elliott District Park for the Soccer Pavilion. I played soccer my whole life. I went to Arizona State, graduated there. I played soccer there as well. Reason I'm here is I was a patron of Big League Dreams when it opened. And when it closed, we started looking for somewhere to play. Hearing everyone not having a place to play, I started engaging with the town of Gilbert in order to open our own soccer dome here in Gilbert. So I was speaking with them as far as opening up a $5 million soccer dome over located on the 14 acres on Ray and the 202. After talking to them, I was concerned about the competition between my dome and Big League, or Elliott District Park. And that's how I proposed myself as an RFP. On August 2nd, I put that RFP in, and on August 8th, I had an interview with Parks and Rec. On August 20th, I was denied partnership with Gilbert based on primarily my lease terms. Well, I had nothing to go off of. They didn't have any numbers from Big League Dreams. I've never owned such a big facility, so I didn't know anything about that. I currently own two businesses in Gilbert. I own Gino's Giant Slice. I have six in the valley, two in Gilbert. On August 21st, I met with Parks and Rec, Robert Carmona, Rocky, John Kennedy, and we talked. There, I proposed a more significant lease term. I offered them $200,000 a year in lease money plus revenue sharing. I also allowed Gilbert to use the facility when leagues weren't in, when the leagues weren't going in order to make extra income for themselves, such as something they called Little Kickers, something they have, and other things, but primarily Little Kickers. On September 14th, they informed that the town wanted to keep it in-house because they believed that there was too much money being left on the table. Now, I've been working with Parks and Rec, but I'm here to talk to council because the numbers that they may have may not be realistic. I'm hoping that I can continue to work with Parks and Rec, but I just need to make sure that council is getting the full story. So hearing the numbers from them, I asked, I asked them, "How do you think, how much do you think you'll make?" And I provided in the documents that I have from Parks and Rec manager Rocky Brown, he said 558,000 gross with 148,000 in expenses and 185 in TI money. So ultimately, at the end of the year, Gilbert's bringing home 410K off the Soccer Pavilion. They said, "Okay." Well, I thought that number was high, so I asked for an explanation for him to break that down. I said, "How are you getting to that number, 558?" He said, "In 216 in leagues and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera." But looking at the Elliott District Park draft business plan on page 14 that I also gave, that was presented to council in July, Parks and Rec's estimated that they're going to make 769,000 from the whole park. That's from softball and soccer. So you're telling me 769 from the whole park, but 558 from soccer? How is that possible from one field making 558 versus the other eight only making the balance, which is a couple hundred thousand dollars?
We appreciate you coming to Town Council Meeting tonight. Unfortunately, when things aren't posted on the agenda, we're not allowed to comment on those in the public meeting. But I appreciate you bringing the information down. And I want you to know that we will both have staff, and I'm sure council members will follow up with you individually.
Thank you.
So thank you. Thank you for being here. And I do love Gino's, especially the butter garlic crust. It's really good. Daniel's family's well versed with Gino. Vice Mayor?
Mayor, I would like to move to approve our consent agenda. I would just like to go ahead and make a few changes to that if I could. I'd like to pull Item 3, Items 3, 5, 8.
I'm so sorry. I'm going to interrupt. I'm so sorry. I'm going to interrupt you real quick because there is one public hearing item that I'd like to move forward. I apologize. I mentioned it earlier and then already forgot. I apologize. What I'd like to do is move Agenda Item 19A forward and have us have a vote on that item first. So if it's amenable to council to move that item up.
Mayor, I move to approve.
I will open the public hearing on Agenda Item 19A, and I will entertain your motion.
I move to approve item 19A as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, and I will close the public hearing on that agenda item, and please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you, council, for assisting us with that agenda item. Vice Mayor.
Yes, Mayor, I will go back to the consent agenda. We would like to pull items three, five, eight, and nine. I would like to move to continue 12A to October 18th, and I would like to approve two, four, excuse me, 3A, four, six, seven, 10, 11, 12, A, B, C, and D, 13, 14, and 15.
We leave 5A as well?
5A included with the five. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I was just seeing that.
Second.
Oh, yes, yeah, five, excuse me, five was pulled, so 5A wouldn't be.
They're two different agenda items.
Okay, then just five is pulled in 5A. Continuing 12 to October 18th. 12.
And then.
12A is continued to October 18th.
And then also including 15A in that motion.
15A, yes, it's hard when they're back and forth.
We apologize. There's been an addendum, so we have a few pages. We have to shuffle to see them all.
Back and forth, yes. 15A included in the 15. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Was that clear, Lisa, for you? Okay, thank you. I believe we had a second. Thank you. Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. I believe that takes us to Agenda Item Three.
Mayor, I move to, or I ask to have this pulled to just make a slight adjustment. This is after, I think the council has been briefed on this, so I probably don't need to do a lot of discussion on that. But if it's okay and there's no other discussion, I'll make a motion. Mayor, I move to approve item three as presented, amending the second sentence of Section 8.3.4 by striking, sorry, let me say this. I move to amend by deleting the second sentence of Section 8.3.4, which reads, "Maintenance includes but is not limited to failures that are not structural and due to maintenance of the surface of the pavement." Sorry for the loud.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you, and thank you for catching that, Councilmember Peterson. That moves us to Agenda Item Five.
Mayor, that's one that I had pulled just briefly. We continue this after last meeting in hopes of being able to spend Gilbert tax dollars in Gilbert with a Chevy dealership in Gilbert. Despite multiple outreaches to the dealership, we have not received any response from the Gilbert-based dealership, and so we will move forward tonight with this. But to all the Gilbert businesses, we'd much rather spend money with you than with somebody else, and so please reach out to the town. So I move to approve item five.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote as well. Thank you. Agenda Item Eight.
Mayor, I have a regular routine of asking on any items where we're awarding contracts, how we selected those firms or businesses. And the answer in this case for this item, and there's nothing wrong with the firm, great, great company. I'm not, I don't have a concern with them in particular, but the answer here is that they were selected from a pre-qualified technical registrants list, which is a list that you could argue has a competitive process involved in getting on the list. But this item is almost half a million dollars, and I just feel like with something that large, we should go through the time and effort of a full competitive process in selecting someone, not just choosing someone from a list. And that's my concern, Mayor, and maybe there's no time or options to do anything else, but I just, I don't think that's the right approach on a contract of that size. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Peterson, any other comments? Councilmember Cook?
On this list, I'm not familiar with the list, my apologies, but is it a list that other municipalities use as part of their selection process, or is this something unique to us?
It's our list, and if I'm not mistaken, I think we re-up the list, if you will, or renew it each year, and there's a process that allows people to end up on the list. But again, you got a list of all these people, and you got a half million dollar fund. You're just picking a name. I don't know.
Do you know why we have the list then, Councilmember Peterson?
I shouldn't be the one to speak to that. Probably staff could.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Councilmember Cook, to your question, the pre-qualified technical registrants list is something that annually the town does go out and solicit to the, those that provide professional architectural engineering and other services to the town so that we are able to contract with them in a more expedited fashion. Specifically to the comment that Councilmember Peterson had made, there are times when we do not, time is of the essence, and the, a more, a longer and more comprehensive process is something we may not have time for. That list, again, is solicited each and every year, and companies are invited and asked if they would like to come and present their qualifications, show us what they are capable of doing, and demonstrate that to us. And if they rise above a certain level of qualification, then they are added to that list. And then when there's specific, a specific service is required, we go to that list and choose from. There are those that are, some that are qualified, and then we'll seek at times to window that list down much quicker that way.
And would you say this list may be similar to some of the other things that we purchase as it relates to state contracts and other municipalities that have other contracts that have been bitted out? Sometimes it might be more efficient or expedite the selection of different vendors or different operators?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Cook. It is very similar to a process that is done by multiple agencies within the state. It follows one that the Department of Transportation does. We actually open it up more frequently to new, new companies to be able to come in and offer, and present their qualifications. We do it on an annual basis. For architectural and engineering services, we're not allowed to ask for price during a selection process. That's something that we actually, once we've selected them, then we negotiate that. If we are not able to come to a successful negotiation, we would terminate and then go to the next most qualified vendor in those situations.
And is there a minimum threshold or that decides what makes the list or not list as you select, you do the selection process?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Cook. There is, and it is by the state statute that that is set. That amount is at, half a million dollars is the limit. If it's above half a million dollars, we are required and constrained by statute to go out for a competition.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm okay moving forward with the agenda item.
Thank you, Councilmember Cook. Any other comments or questions from the town team? All right, we will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item Eight.
Second. That motion carries with a 6-1 vote. Thank you. Agenda Item Nine.
Mayor, I think there were two of us. I'll just briefly comment. This is that same project that I just think, you know, it's like half a million dollars per, per desk, if you will, that we're providing accommodations for, and just seems very, less efficient.
Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item Number Nine.
We need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Please vote. That motion carries with a 5-2 vote. Thank you. I believe that completes our consent agenda. If someone wants to double-check that with all of the changes.
I believe it does, too.
Thank you. Appreciate that. That moves us to our public hearing items. And are there any questions from the town team on any of the public hearing items?
Eighteen, please.
Eighteen.
Mayor, on item seventeen, I have, we have a change in the motion from our town attorney.
Thank you. I will open the public hearing on Agenda Items sixteen and nineteen, and close the public hearing on Agenda Items sixteen and nineteen, and entertain a motion.
Mayor, point of order, are we going to talk on the fees? I should probably add those.
I just, yeah, I, I'm just doing sixteen and nineteen right now.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Move to approve. Second.
Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. I will open the public hearing on Agenda Item seventeen and look to Vice Mayor to assist.
Yes, Mayor, I don't have any slips to speak on this item. The applicant is requesting that this item be sent back to the Planning Commission for a future meeting of theirs, and I don't have a date certain, but that's what we would like to make the motion to return to the Planning Commission upon the request of the applicant.
Thank you. I will close the public hearing on Agenda Item seventeen and accept that as a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. That moves us to Agenda Item eighteen. I will open the public hearing on Agenda Item eighteen. Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you. So item eighteen had a comment in the packet that they are asking to proceed with the right-of-way easement acquisition in the absence of appraisal, okay? On the list, you can see on the next page all of the individuals in the list. So, you know, we're trying to learn from history, right? In discussions with staff, they told me that appraisal value equals fair market value. And I wanted them to just confirm that because the words "fair market value" are in the resolution. If, if we can hear that here in the open session, I'm supportive of this tonight. Otherwise, I think we need to make sure to get appraisal value, so. If someone wants to just confirm that understanding here, then I think I'm good on this one.
Mayor Daniels, Councilmember Taylor, that is correct. And that's what, that's the process that the CIP group uses.
Great. Mayor, with that, I'm happy to make a motion unless there's other people that want to comment on this.
I will close the public hearing on Agenda Item eighteen and entertain the motion.
I move to approve item eighteen as published in the public documents and clarified by staff tonight.
Second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. Would we like to hear 20, 21, 22, 23, and 24 in one item? All right. I will open the public hearing on all of those agenda items and ask staff to assist. Want to bring up your scout tonight to help assist?
Sergeant-at-Arms.
Yes. Welcome, Eric. Thank you for being here.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Today, we're going to have a very, very brief presentation and on our utility rates process since the last time we met. Again, we have four utilities up for discussion: water, wastewater, environmental services, residential, and commercial. Following our timeline, as approved, you can see that we have gone through the notice of intent to raise fees and rates. And since then, staff has engaged in two customer outreach workshops that we'll discuss in a little bit more detail. And here we are today at possible council adoption and the public hearing. Again, these would be effective November 1st if approved tonight. Staff has gone on an extensive outreach campaign. On the top right-hand side, you see the bill stuffer that we placed in all utility bills, twice, July and August bills, noticing residents that a change is, a potential change is coming, and giving them opportunities to attend two outreach meetings that we held in August. We published a utility rates website in early June following council action. On that website is a utility bill calculator where customers can punch in their own water use and demographics, and it will calculate all the changes that are proposed here, as well as their existing bills, so they can see what the impact is for their particular situation. We had these two workshops on August 7th and on August 20th. We had a non-residential customer workshop each day, and then a residential customer workshop each day. Attendance was very light. We only had five non-residential customers show up in total. We had about 40 residential customers show up. We published the whiteboard video that you see at the bottom there, explaining the process, as well as what some average impacts might be, and then the utility rate information flyer that we have shared extensively. These public meetings, as was noticed in your council communications, we heard a little bit of feedback, particular with timing or why now, some of those questions. Most of our, of our customers seemed that they were, that they were, their issues were resolved once they discussed with staff. And with that, Mayor, council, we'll just leave you with this graph that shows the last time we raised rates was in 2009, and you've seen a pretty significant change just in the Consumer Price Index over that time. Staff, is available for any questions?
Thank you, Eric, and for the presentation as well. We've been given a packet of documents. Was it provided to town staff ahead of time? A copy as well.
I have one up here for the slide, or for the projector when I'm ready. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, we'll go ahead and start with you today.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Anderson.
I just have a couple of quick questions.
Okay, Councilmember Anderson.
Before we get into his extensive report.
The laminated bound graph. There's no bread on it.
There's no bread. I didn't see any bread.
I was bummed out.
Eric, just a couple of quick questions to follow up on some of the presentation. We do have one new fee, the environmental compliance fee. Could you explain that a little bit more so the public understands what that really is?
Sure. Mayor, Councilmember Anderson, the environmental compliance fee is a fee designed to collect specific revenue for federally mandated environmental compliance programs, particularly stormwater compliance and air quality programs that did not come with a dedicated federal funding source. And so, we have proposed to take those costs from the Environmental Services Residential Fund and split them out into their own separate cost. And the environmental compliance fee will cover all of those costs of those programs.
The other quick question, I had the same reaction as, as the citizens did when I saw the rate increase. That in year one, they're so significant, and then as we get into year two, three, four, and five, there's none. Could you explain again why we do that initially in the first year instead of spreading that out over the five years?
Sure. Mayor Daniels, Councilmember Anderson, the, the idea behind one rate change is, there's, it's multifaceted, but the basics are that we don't want to, we don't want to come off as trying to sneak some things over multiple years and make them seem less noticeable. We want to do this once, let the public understand it, go through the process one time, and let them know that we're not going to be coming back year after year. The understanding right now is that we have got a five-year plan. We're going to meet our targets at the end of the five years with the information that we have readily available. So unless things change drastically outside of our control, we, we would expect that these should last through the full five-year period.
Thank you.
Question for you. One of the comments that we've got from some of the HOAs is to postpone the beginning of this till January 1 for their budgeting purposes. What is the impact from your perspective if we, if we postpone these till January 1?
Mayor, Councilmember Ray, these rates were built on a full fiscal year collection. We have moved back our timeframe a little bit, and so with these rates already not being effective until November 1, we will have foregone four months of collection. There would be an impact there. We have not reworked the rates based on this, this particular delay, and there's probably delay, and there's probably an impact, at least in the outer years, due to a further delay.
So, what does that mean as far as dollar amount? What do we, is this a million dollars? Is this $10 million? What's the difference? And is there not another area, and this may be a budget question, is there not another area we can pull from to cover that? My point is, I do feel for the HOAs having budgeted, and then all of a sudden having a potential large impact to them.
Mayor Daniels, Councilmember Ray, just doing some top-of-the-mind math, which is dangerous, but assuming about a 10% or 11% increase, and so it's about 1% of revenue per month that would be there, so delaying it would be a couple of percentage points in the revenue. I can't do the dollar amount off the top of my head, but there is two facets to that, so delaying it will impact, have a revenue impact. It also, we've let the customers know to expect it in November, and all of the campaigns have been around that, so in delaying it, we would need to let them know that they wouldn't see the impact until a couple of months later. Not insurmountable, we could do it, but we would recommend staying with the November that's been posted.
Mayor, just a comment. I know that we did hear from an HOA that said that it would be easier for them because their calendar runs January through December and for them to budget, but I can't imagine that we don't have HOAs that run on a fiscal calendar, so then no matter when it gets changed, it will affect their budget also, and by delaying it even more, it would affect our budget, so I think that those are other things that we need to think about. Did you hear from anybody about the budgeting when you were doing your meetings? Or just the one email that we received from the public? Just that one?
Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, we didn't, I don't recall hearing anything at the public outreach meetings or in any of the emails that we received, except for the one.
Thank you.
All right, if that completes questions from Council, I'd like to have our residents speak before we deliberate, if that's all right? Okay, Vice Mayor.
Sorry, Mayor. I'd invite Joe Backus to the podium, and Joe, if you can just give us your name and city of residence.
Hi, I'm Joe Backus. I represent... Yes?
Get closer to that one.
I'm so sorry.
There you go.
I'm Joe Backus. I'm a homeowner and board member in Silverhawk Homeowners Association, and I'm coming to you tonight to discuss exactly what you're talking about. Our budgeting is based on a calendar year, and it's this time of year that we start to do our budgeting for the next year, as well as set our HOA assessment rates, and we haven't factored this into our budget for this year, and this will be quite a significant increase. We're looking at about a $6,000 increase overall in our budget for next year with overseeding for the water increase, because you're going to a single rate for the commercial water landscape use instead of the tiered rate that we're used to. So that's going to be a pretty significant impact to most HOAs who are working on a calendar year. So we're asking that you consider strongly delaying it till the beginning of the year. I don't know any HOA that works on a different fiscal year. Most are doing it on a calendar year with their associations. I don't know of any that do it the other way. I did attend the meeting. Staff was very good at explaining. I'm not here to object to the rate specifically. They did a very good job of explaining why they're doing it, why they're doing it with all at once. I think they did an excellent job of putting it together. The timing is just bad right now for our association. I have talked to other associations, so if you would, consider strongly delaying this till the start of January. We can adjust our budgets for it, as well as our assessments if needed. We can take that into consideration. Any questions?
Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
And thanks for your service on your HOA as well. The closest form of government to the people, HOA. quasi-government, thank you. All right. At this time, we'll deliberate with Council here, and I think Councilmember Peterson, you have maybe the most to say. We'll start with you.
Thank you, Mayor, for combining it into one. I was going to suggest that, and thank you. I'll try and be as brief as I can. If we can go ahead and start with my first slide. I have them numbered. Somebody kind of made fun of how they're all skewed, the copies. I was pressed for time. I also handwrote the page numbers too, so you'll see that this is not my usual level of beauty here. But I want to revisit, you know, why I voted against the original notice to increase fees. And just, first of all, I just want to thank staff. They have, we've met, and we've talked, and we've spent quite, you know, we've spent some time talking together about this, and I appreciate the additional information they've given, and, you know, some of it's been helpful to some level, but I'm still struggling, and I want to just kind of walk through where my mind is on this. So I'm just going to talk about water real quick, but again, the main question was why, you know, are we producing 40% less per employee, you know, now than we were in fiscal year, you know, '98, for example? And so that was, that was a big question, and interestingly, and I'm glad to see that my numbers aren't so crazy, that even staff would agree that, well, these numbers came right from staff, but also even when you include the whole department, all of the water department, it's not these same rates. It does soften the decrease, but overall, we see that the output per FTE has decreased. So let's go to the next one. All right, so this, this is what, this should look familiar, because staff gave us this as part of a briefing and explanation as to what's going on. Wow, you can't see the bold on that at all, but I underlined where I wanted to focus on for just a second here. Their main argument being that while our assets have grown, staffing has grown as well, but at a slower rate. Well, actually, the data metrics they give us, it doesn't, it's not really that simple. I'll show you. Let's go to the next one. You'll notice, oh, just the next page, sorry. You notice this looks really familiar? That's their chart. It's their chart. I didn't change anything other than I added the actual data points, so we can start to do a little math and see how things compare. And just looking at the pipe, miles of pipe, okay? The argument that the miles of pipe has increased at a faster rate than our FTE, well, if you do the math, actually, the miles of pipe in that timeframe has increased by 131%. Over the same timeframe, our staff has increased by 179%. Actually, staff's increasing at a faster rate than the miles of pipe, not at a slower rate. So actually, if this does anything, it argues towards my concern, that we're producing less per employee. I don't, I still don't know why. Now, in fairness, and I didn't graph the numbers, but the number of fire hydrants per employee does track that way. In other words, number of hydrants increases faster than the rate of the employees, but in my mind, I look at this and it's a wash. I got one metric going one way, the other one going another way. Let's go to the next slide. So this is the valves, number of valves, and different metric, and interesting one to look at. Interestingly, also, you'll notice, and this will come into my two different numbers, they start in '97 on this one. The other ones were on '99. Now we go all the way back to '97. Well, look, I'll be totally honest, they're right. Technically, if we go from '97, the increase was 239% in the number of valves, while staff only increased 231%. That's a pretty marginal difference. I call that a toss-up, but I just was curious, what if we go from the year '99 like we did on the other metrics? Well, if you do that, valves have increased by 164%, whereas staff has increased more, by 179%. Look, when it comes to this metric, I call it a push. It's a toss-up. So I've got so far three metrics, one metric arguing my concern, one arguing against, and one that's kind of a toss-up. So, so far, I still have the same question. It's outstanding. Let's go to the next, for five. Thank you for your help on this. I know it's, I'm actually almost done. I was going to spend the most time on those first two, promise. I'm getting closer than you think. Water production capacity and staffing. Well, this is interesting. We're talking now about how much we could possibly produce. Wow. You know, if I had employees and staffing that says, "Look what we could produce," I'd say, "That's nice, produce it." So I am not, I'm sorry, this just doesn't really help me much. We can talk about in theory how much we can produce per person, but until we do, it's just talk. And I don't know but what the demand for water increases, and then we have staff coming to us saying, "We need more staff, because we've got more demand." So I'm sorry, that just doesn't help me much. Let's go to the next one. This is one staff and I, we talked about, and it's an interesting metric. Basically, this shows that the amount of surface water versus groundwater that comprises our total water output is shifting towards surface water, okay? That's interesting. And I asked, and I still don't have an answer, and I appreciate that there's a comment about it, but I still don't know why that should mean we need more staff. Now, I can see the argument that surface water requires more water quality work maybe than groundwater, but then groundwater has pumps that fail and stuff like that, and wells that stop performing, and there's other issues. I mean, I don't know. Maybe this makes sense, but I certainly don't have enough information to justify that this is why we produce less per employee. And then finally, there's just the comments about water quality standards increasing. Okay, you know, when I think about, and again, I haven't gone out there testing and working alongside folks, but generally, I'm thinking this is going to be changing processes that are already in place. We already have to test water quality. We already have to treat it with certain chemicals. We already have to do certain things. Now, maybe we have to test it a little more often or add a new chemical, but mostly you're just adding to processes you're already doing. It's not like you're recreating the will and we got to hire a bunch of new people. I mean, this doesn't make sense to me. Maybe this does explain it, but I certainly don't have enough information to really justify. So, I'm still, my recap on this, and I'm not going to comment much on wastewater, because that'll be very brief, but just to recap on the water side, I'm still wondering, where are the economies of scale? So maybe we do have some things that are a little harder to deal with, but we've grown. Where are our economies of scale? Where is the investment in SCADA, for example, or better tech, that's an example of better technology, more expensive technology? Where's our return on investment in terms of bodies? That's why you invest in better processes and better technology, is to save it on the overhead. So I just, I'm still scratching my head. Let's go, I'm almost done. Wastewater, real quick. This is the graph on eight, page eight. Sorry, it's page eight. You know, same basic idea, you know, almost a 40%, 35% decrease in output for, for employee, or collection input, excuse me. And so let's go to staff's, page nine. Again, how do we explain this? They talk about the strength of the staff, so we have to use more chemical to treat this stuff. Okay, does that really take extra bodies? I mean, there's, I'm not saying there's not more to it than that, but, okay, cost of chemicals, one thing, but that's not bodies. I'm talking FTEs here. I haven't talked about cost of the chemical. Those are, that's a separate issue from the question I'm asking. Let's go to the next one. Doesn't address my first chart, is my point, Mayor. You're making a good argument on the overall cost, but it doesn't address the FTE question. This is talking about how often we're policing people who input into our system, okay? That's good. I don't have enough information here to really make sense of it. We claim here that we're more proactive than other communities are. That's still not even as helpful as, what I need is, we're more proactive now than we were in '99. I don't have any data to tell me that we are, so I don't know. Last page, I'm almost done. This is my favorite one, because actually, this matches mine exactly. It's graphed the opposite direction, because years start on the right and move to the left, which mine does it the other way, but agrees with me. We have fewer sewer miles per collections FTE. I mean, yeah, so less, less we're dealing with per FTE. Again, there's an agreement. So, Mayor, I'm still in this place where I am, look, inflation's real. By the way, I don't think CPI is the right metric when you're talking about water. There's other better metrics. CPI is total basket of goods for the average consumer. That's not a great index, index. But the idea of inflation is real. I'm not denying that. And if the FTE numbers weren't so disturbing and hard for me to explain, I wouldn't be here complaining. People expect rate increases once in a while, but they also expect us to do everything we can to be as efficient as possible, and the metrics that I've seen don't convince me that we've done that, and that's where I'm at. I'm not convinced of that, so I'm not ready to raise rates. We've heard that, you know, people are having a good attitude about it, but it can be very expensive. It can have a very large impact. So, Mayor, thank you for the time. I really appreciate the indulgence. I won't probably say much more. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. We did begin talking about this quite a while ago, and I know there's been a lot of rate studies and efforts to understand. I apologize that there are still questions for you that have not been answered, but I do feel as though we've had ample time to get the answers that we need from staff. And so obviously, there's a lot of factors involved here. Valerie, I'm going to rename you Vanna tonight. Thank you for the high-quality job that you did. Councilmember Cook.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion here, but I do want to say, the HOA issue is no doubt something that we've all talked about, and I'm not sure what's the best way to do this, because I know that the staff has reached out to everyone, and Eric, I think we did this a year ago or more. So I know that we've had opportunities to, you know, share that with the community, so I do really appreciate your request and so forth. So, Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve agenda items 20, 21, 22, 23, and 24.
Okay. I have to close the public hearing first. I think there's, Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you. You know, an old friend of mine says, "A man convinced against his will is of the same opinion still," and that's a true statement. You know, Victor has shown us empirically why the case does not justify a rate increase. We've got our minds made up, so let me just point out a couple of things to justify my vote, and I appreciate the data, and have we had time? Yeah, we've had time, but the case still hasn't been made. The burden of proof is on staff to make the case, and I think they think they have. Maybe they have to some of you, but as you can see, the case is not really settled for those of us that do have backgrounds in efficiency and productivity and large manufacturing that's germane to this. Some of us have worked in these environments and have seen how private sectors work compared to this. This is the easy way out, to just pass it along, right? Private sector, you just can't do that, right? You just can't say, "We're just going to raise all of our prices." Have to be very concerned about what your competitors are doing. And the other thing that private sector does is when they see a gap like this, they levy significant challenges to their team to go close that gap through efficiencies. And I will applaud our staff, because I think they have done some really good work. I don't want to discount the work they did. One of those charts that Eric put up, I think was really great. It's kind of that three-over-under chart. That bottom one was good work. It was really good work, and I really appreciate that. I just, and the fact that we haven't raised it since 2009 is a testimony to that as well. But in the context of everything else, right, we're looking to raise a bunch of debt on a public safety training facility, maybe on parks, right? Staff previously, earlier this year, was asking us to raise the levy on secondary property taxes. So the burden of proof is really on them to justify this for me, and I've expressed more than once to see the economies of scale here that we would expect in the private sector, and I've been waiting. I've had discussions as well, and I can't chase them around, right? I've got things to do, but the case hasn't been made, and so to just pass this along, I don't think it's justified right now. Maybe it is later, maybe there is better data, and I'll continue to listen and keep an open mind to it, but I do need to see the case be made on that. So, Mayor, thank you for the time and letting me share my thoughts.
Absolutely. If there is data that's been requested that hasn't been received, I think that merits a conversation between you and our town manager, but it's my understanding, based on the information that I've been provided, that all questions have been answered up until this point, and if that's not the case, we do have a responsibility to continue to ask those questions and not to throw up our hands at council meeting and determine that we can't chase staff around. Staff has been more than accommodating for all of us at every level, and not a single member of our staff will turn down a meeting with a council member, not a single one of them. And so I think that's disingenuous to say that you can't chase them around. They're ready and waiting for us to meet with them at any time. They've been clear about that.
Mayor, thank you for the lecture. They have... They have asked, and they have provided things that we've asked. What I'm saying, there's a difference between providing data and providing the case, right? They're providing the case that they feel justifies this. I just don't simply agree with the conclusions of that, okay? So you're combining those two things, and I'm just saying, they have been supportive of the questions, right? But the overall thing that we asked is, if we can see that the overall case is made, right, not specific data points, then I'm certainly supportive of this, right? And that's the distinction that I'm making, and I hope that you can appreciate in my comments here.
I think that's a fair statement. We have a motion. I think we had a second. I will close the public hearing on agenda item, excuse me, 20, 21, 22, 23, and 24. We had a motion. Did we have a second? We did not.
Second.
Second. Please vote.
Mayor, I move to amend the motion to change the effective date to January 1st.
Can you clear the board?
That would be in order if I could get in there fast enough.
Mayor, if I could just provide a bit of information.
Yeah, let me reopen the public hearing on this agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank Pat Walker with our consulting group. She was able to do faster math than I can. The change for one month on water is about $600,000, just over that. So for context in your discussion, that may be of interest.
The $1.2 million for November and December, as well as probably some re-advertising dollars.
Mayor, if I may comment, when I did the original squaring up of the rate analysis, I found there was quite a bit of room for breathing that wasn't reported there. In fact, when we first started the meeting, there was a number in there that directly contradicted another number in our packet. It was underestimating our fund balance to the beginning. So Mayor, I don't think two months is going to kill anything, and if it helps most of those who are affected by the rates, I think we'll weather the storm just fine.
Second.
Second to the amendment. Thank you. We have a motion and a second to the amendment and a question by Councilmember Cook.
Kelly, back up. So the $1.2, where would you think it might come from? Like, if we had to supplement, or is it contingency at that point? Are we thinking that we might make it up as we finish up the fiscal year, that we might have a surplus in general sales tax? Where do you think that would might come from?
Mayor, Councilmember Cook, a good question. So it would put a short in the end of the five-year plan, not necessarily in the first year. So that over time, we would not be having the money to do those CIP projects that we've pushed to the end of the five-year plan in order to be able to cash on them at the end.
So we have five years, you're saying, to actually make up the delta? Is that what I'm hearing, or the gap?
If we wanted to do a different rate change, but there will also be economic changes over that period of time. So it's possible to change over that period.
And the $1.2 million that you talked about, that's water only. Does that include wastewater or reclaimed water?
Mayor, Councilmember Ray, it does not. That is water only.
Mayor Daniels, to clarify for the amendment, Councilmember Peterson, you said January 1st. Could that date be changed to effective after December 31st?
Sure.
That'd be easier, so it would become effective on January 1st rather than January 2nd.
Effective after January, or December 31st of this year.
Billings generated after December 31st of this year.
Great, thank you.
And I just want to also clarify, is that motion to only delay water, or is that to delay all of the fee changes?
I was just going to move them all.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I understood. All right. We need to vote on that amendment now. Please vote. That motion fails with a 5-2 vote. And now that brings us back to the original motion before us. Please vote. That motion carries with a 5-2 vote. Thank you. Thanks to town staff. It's a year-plus worth of work that has culminated in this evening's vote, so thank you. That completes our public hearing items this evening and moves us to boards, commission, and committee reports from our council. Any report outs? Right. Future meetings? I think we're taking care of the two future meeting agenda items at our council retreat, so they've been removed from this agenda. So in case anybody was wondering what happened, they did not fall off. They've been added to that council retreat agenda for October. Report from our town manager on current events.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I wanted to recognize Kristen Drew and her team, who received the Process and Leadership Award by the Wellness Council of Arizona. They're actually receiving that award tonight. So she's done, her and her team have done great work in implementing some wellness programs in our organization to the benefit of our employees. I also want to thank Eric, Kelly, and Jessica for all the work that has gone into the rate changes. That was a huge effort. We actually started talking about the need, the projected need for rate changes under our old budget director, Dawn Buckland. And so I appreciate the work. That was a lot of hard work. We appreciate you taking the time to understand the matter. We appreciate all of our residents who came forward to understand what goes into this, but a lot of work, and we're very appreciative of their efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Report from council on current events. Councilmember Cook.
Mayor, thank you. I know that we only have one council meeting in October, but is the month to recognize domestic violence. I know the governor has his event on October 2nd, and I have checked with the Parks and Recs. We will be lighting our tower on October 2nd to reflect Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Thank you, Councilmember Cook. Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I have to have a prop. I feel like I'm Councilmember Cook right now, but it is Hunger Action Month, and since I walked around, ooh, I walked around the police department and fire department today with this on and got some really crazy looks from some of the fire, some of the police officers. It was crazy. Please remember that it is Gilbert Feeding Families Hunger Action Month, and please consider a donation. $1 equals five meals. And we have several events coming up still, one being Drop in the Drive to Crush Hunger next Wednesday evening, across the street at the Public Safety Complex from 3:30 to 6:00 p.m. We will have apparatus there for the kids to play on. We will have people there for them to meet, police officers, firefighters, and we will be collecting food and money. And I'd like to challenge all of you to donate. If you didn't know, it qualifies for the state tax credit. So if you're looking for a way to donate back, this would be a great way to do it. And again, like I said, $1 equals five meals. We'll also be at the farmer's market on the next two Saturdays. So if you'd like to come out and see us there, I will definitely be there this Saturday, but next Saturday, we have the fire station ribbon cutting. So Valerie just took a picture of me with that on.
Might end up in some sort of Twitter feed, I'm sure of it. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other update on current events? I have two this evening. The first is that Fowler Christian Center is hosting the Third Annual Desert Harvest Car Show on Saturday, October 27th, from 10 to 3:00, and it does benefit some veterans' organizations, and we're grateful for their contributions to our community and ensuring that our veterans are well taken care of. And the last item is something that our town clerk, Lisa Maxwell, is unaware of, but we are happy to extend some congratulations to her. Lisa Maxwell has earned the designation of Master Municipal Clerk, which is awarded by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. These are very organized individuals, and we're very proud of Lisa Maxwell. Only those who complete demanding education requirements and who have a record of significant contributions that are local government, community, and state are recognized with this high award. We have a certificate for you, signed by each of our council members. So thank you and congratulations for that unique, and I think you might be the only person that I know that has that. And so that makes you, you know, unique in and of itself. So thanks, Lisa. We appreciate it. I will give this to you after the council meeting, with a stack of work to do, I think. So thank you. With that, our meeting is completed this evening. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.